Shall we go? You ready?
We have Kristen and Red. They were gonna be online.
Yeah, Anna, are they online yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. Let's give them a minute or two. Laura's gotta go to dress rehearsals or try to get the student presentation moving.
Oh, got it. Do you have a livestream coming from the theater?
Yeah, we have a livestream.
No, I mean like right now to your computer? Can you see what they're doing?
No.
That would be amazing.
But there's an option to livestream the show if you can't go in person.
Oh, that's cool.
So it shows it?
Twelfth Night by Shakespeare, but it's set in the 1980s on a college campus.
In case you couldn't tell from the earrings.
Well, let's get started, because it's 6:32. It's called Order 632, meeting of the Rocksbury Board of School Directors. For sort of business public comment. And I don't have the screen of people who might be watching in Libya or Anna, so if you could.
I can tell you if somebody's got the hand raised. Right now, you're good.
Good, all right. And no one in the room either. So that's, we're gonna do the consent agenda after the student presentation, just mix that up a little because Laura has scooted out of dress rehearsals and then do back at some point soon. So let's do that.
We do have one hand raised for public comment.
Okay. Why don't you just let that person go? If you could introduce yourself, that would be great.
Sure. Hi, everybody. My name is Amanda Arsete. Parent of two children. I am here just to, I read the report, the superintendent's report, and read about the literacy bill. I just wanna encourage this school board to really stand and ensure that there will be, that we will not as a district be against this bill. Maybe there are concerns about the 40 hours. That is totally understandable, but there's a lot of great components in that bill that will impact all of our students in the state and in our school. As you know, there's a lot of concerned parents around the literacy and dyslexia in our district. There's a lot of things happening that we are concerned about in terms of how we are assessing our kids' needs and our assessing our deliracy that they're receiving. And we have been really happy for the commitment that the district took for the two-year training that the elementary school teachers are taking. And we still see a lot of inequities. There's a lot of parents that are paying out of pocket for tutoring outside of the district. There's a lot of parents that cannot afford that. And it's still, it's a huge, huge component of inequities in this, in this district. So I really hope that if you are going to testify against that bill, that there is a lot more information that you listen to the VPR news cast that came out with Representative Senator Gulick talking about the bill, those other literacy educators in the state. And there's a lot of information out there, and I really encourage all of you to be informed and really be on the right side of history for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Does that it? And do anyone else?
That's it.
Great, thank you. Laura and Miriam, pick your way.
Okay. Hi. We just have a little student presentation about what's been happening in the past few weeks at MHS to keep everyone updated and like talk about some really fun, positive stuff that's happening in this school. I look like this because I'm in the middle of dress rehearsal for our show, Twelfth Night by William Shakespeare, set on a college campus in the 1980s. That's why I have like a lot of blush on. Yeah, so we can go to the next slide. It's a little, I try to make it fancy, but yeah. It looks very official. I can just share what, on my computer.
Well, Laura, you look gorgeous, first of all. I love the makeup. Most people don't dress up for board meetings. I can't seem to advance the script. Like, I can't seem to advance it when I'm pulling it up, but hold, keep going. I'll, I'll keep trying.
Okay, so we had a few events in the past week. We had our Spring Choral Concert, March 19th, which was really fun. Miriam performed. She was really great. Then we had the day after this first ever event at our school called Soul and Soup for the Soul, where our cooking class made soup for the entire school. And as a whole school, we sat in the gym and we ate soup and we had a community meal, and it was so great because you just saw everyone mingling and talking to each other. And it was one of those events where you were like, wow, this is a really great school. Like, I don't know anywhere else that does this. Then on March 27th, there was a student organized walkout for, in support of ending the occupation in Palestine, where students marched to the State House and they gave speeches in support of Palestine. Then this past Saturday, we had our annual Spring Fling. We hosted four other schools and we had over 500 students dancing and sweating and having fun and things like that. On Monday, spoken word poet Stephen Willis came to our school and he ran a few workshops with the English classes about how to construct like poems based on identity. And he, he made us fill out this like chart about like stuff about like race and gender and ethnicity. And then we wrote five metaphors on what it meant to exist as that identity in society. And he was like, five metaphors? You just wrote a poem. And that was really cool. And he shared some of his poetry from his book, which like chronicles his life story as a black man growing up in Chicago. Our science department was doing some pretty cool stuff. Our physics class was doing an egg drop in the hallway. I don't think it was that messy because they're really good physics students, so nothing happened. Our biology class did a fingerprinting lab, which kind of mimics like the technology they use in like forensics labs when they take fingerprints of like evidence and how to like track DNA and things like that. And then in our AP Biology class, which I'm in, we did a lab where we used plasmids to make bacteria glow in the dark, which was pretty cool. And yeah, tomorrow we open Twelfth Night. We've been working on this show since January and we were sold out, but then we added more seats so you can buy a ticket to be in person or you can buy a link to the livestream if you can't make it in person. And it's really cool. And those are my student updates of what has happened at this school. Oh, wait, I promise. Okay, so I was in the class that made the soup, so I promised my teacher I would like talk about this. We had leftover soup and so we packaged that up and we donated 40 quarts of soup to another way. So we were able to have, share our soup with our school community, but also our outside community. Yeah. And that's it. Yeah.
What time is the play?
The play is at seven and then on Saturday, there's a, there's a two o'clock matinee.
And a seven PM, right?
And a seven PM.
Yeah, yeah. I wish we had a full house to hear all of that.
I mean, if you guys get done early, you might be able to peek your heads into the theater and see what we're working on. So yeah. I'm gonna go and finish the show now. So thank you. Thanks, Miriam.
Great, so let's skip back to the consent agenda. For those who are tuning in, no one in the room. The consent agenda is essentially items that are pretty routine in terms of just things you have to approve to keep business moving, like minutes for informer meetings and co-curricular contracts. We actually are ratifying one of our union contracts, which is a big deal, but we usually do it by consent agenda. So it just, it saves time and moves things along. And if anyone has a question about it, we just pull it out and discuss it. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do I have a second?
A second.
A discussion?
I have a question. On the AFSCME contract, what employees does that cover?
That is, and let me make sure I get it right. It's, it's basically everyone who's not an IA or teacher who's in a cotton, who's in a union.
Supports.
So it's our admin assistants, our technology, our custodians. Those are the three main groups, the registrars.
Okay. And it's like, you know, I took a quick look at the contract. And it was pretty long, like 40 something pages. Is there anything that you feel like we should know that's changed since the last contract?
No, we didn't. We had some language changes this time around. Nothing particularly significant other than just very typical negotiations and language changes. It was, it was a long negotiations process, but it resulted in few major changes.
I have a follow-up to that. Do, can you give us the highlights of what the salary? I'm, I'm just guessing salary increases over the years are?
Yeah, so keep in mind that this is a very small group of employees. This is around 15 to 20 employees. Like, there's not many in this union. And so we settled on 5% each of the next three years.
Okay.
Great.
Thanks. And just in case anybody's wondering, 5% is what Christina had in our budget for next year, for FY25. That is what she budgeted for FY25. So it's right in line with our budget. We don't have to change anything.
That's good. Red has his hand up.
Red?
Yeah, the MRESSA contract, the working day starts at 7:30 and ends at, I believe, 3:00. Is there a timeframe for this group of folks?
There's not a, there are for custodians. There's specific shift times for custodians. These jobs do have very specific job descriptions in them. Most of them work from 8:00 to 4:00. Some work from 7:00 to 3:00. Some work from 7:30 to 3:30. You know, like there, it depends on the job. But the, the custodians are the only ones in the contract that have very specific hours because there are shifts.
Is there, let's just hypothetically, if the district were to sort of, totally hypothetically, were to add a position that helped with transportation, would this be the union group that it might fall into or would it have to be outside of the three unions that we work with right now?
I wouldn't know. We'd have to design the job description. I doubt, it would not fit under this unit, probably.
Okay, thanks.
Kristen has already done.
Kristen?
It's kind of hard to tell.
Hi, thanks. Can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, I just had a question about the superintendent's report, Libby, in particular. The legislation that sounds like it's moving through, I think it was sent it to House in terms of the literacy education modules. And I was just curious, like around, I guess, the details, like the why, the what. I'm curious if kind of the modules that they're recommending, recommending, are these congruent with our current approach to literacy at MRPS and?
I don't know. Nobody's seen them.
Nobody's seen them. Okay. And has, has this been based on testimony from particular groups or individuals? And just wondering in their process of kind of reviewing what they're considering, are they gonna be seeking feedback from literacy specialists within the state or superintendent's group or principals group?
Lots of people have been testifying to the House around this. I'm not sure where the 40 hours came from. I really have no idea because it's not based on any kind of research whatsoever. So I don't know where that number came from and I didn't follow how they came up with that number. That's just what's in the bill. So, but now the House Ed will hear lots of testimony from lots of different people too, including the Superintendent's Association and teachers and the NEA and the Principals Association and the Stern Center. And you know, that's, that's just how these bills work. So they'll hear plenty of, plenty of testimony around this.
And so we don't know the nature of the modules or kind of the philosophy and whether or not it's sort of, you know, syncs with what we're already doing or it's a departure from what we're doing. We don't really have any content.
I don't, I don't know what they're, what are in them. If, if people don't know, they haven't been shared with the field.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
So Kristen, there's a, there's a really good piece on Vermont Edition that, I don't know if it answers all of your questions and I didn't listen to the whole thing. So, so there's certainly a lot of information about what's being discussed out there. And yeah, I'm certainly a fan of VPR or Vermont Public, so you could, you could watch, listen to that podcast.
Okay, thank you.
Is it a podcast or is it just a?
Now, it's, it's a, it was yesterday maybe aired, so now you can listen to it on podcast. But yeah, it was aired live, I think during the Tuesday afternoon show.
Any further discussion about the consent agenda? Can just be a new guy question, but what are co-curricular contracts? I didn't see a link to them or?
They're like, they're coaches, coaches or advisors for clubs or something like that.
They were one of the attachments.
Yeah, they're not, they're not in the public board packet because they're confidential until we approve them or whatever in the consent agenda. So you wouldn't find them online in the board packet, but they are attached to the email that board members get.
And I think they're even confidential actually.
Maybe even afterward, because it's a person and what they're getting paid and they're not, they're not really an employee of the district.
New guy question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're very small sums of money.
For a lot of work. The amount of hours they work.
For a lot of work.
Yeah.
They rival, you might say, the stipend of a school board member. I have one other question, Libby. You referenced the blog that the administrators are putting out. How would people sign up for that if they wanted to get alerts for that blog?
You wouldn't. You wouldn't get alerts for that. That's a, that's an internal document that's sent out. And so we're putting a PDF in the board packet.
Was there one in this? Are you gonna start doing that?
I didn't see one. It should have gone in the board packet. Oh, we should, that was supposed to go in the board packet. I apologize.
Okay.
Make sure that Anna gets the, we got, one went out today, so we'll make sure that it went, that the board superintendent report probably didn't make much sense without it.
I remembered that you had other kinds of communications of that nature. And I thought I was signed up for them at one point and that's why I was a little confused. So now this makes a little more sense.
Now, the board, I'm sorry about that. The PDFs should have gone into the board packet.
I did see it today. I read through most of it today. I don't know when exactly it appeared, but it is available now.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anna attached, did a follow-up?
Could be.
Yeah.
They'll, they'll now go in the board packet, just as a, but there'll be a PDF. They won't be, because they have live links, but the links are for teachers to fill things out and things like that. So like, that's not appropriate. What I wanted to show, I think it's good communication and good information from our central office administrators. And it's just good, I think, for the public and for the board to see the information that's going out, the messaging that's going out.
Yeah, agreed. Okay, thanks. I'll look again.
Any more discussion on the consent agenda? I'm glad we did Laura's presentation first.
Yeah, right.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes? So now we're gonna do committee assignments at the leave. So what we thought we'd do with these is have the current chairs, to the extent that they're, they're with us. I think, I think everyone except Emma and Scott or I can do, just do an overview of the committee. And then, you know, these are open for complete reassignment. If you want a different committee, you can have a different committee. If, you know, I think the only person who's, who's not on a committee is Tim. But, you know, definitely shift around if you're, if you are looking for a new challenge or looking to get into a different committee, definitely let us know. I mean, I do wanna say that, you know, this is probably true, like a lot of committees have a lot of ongoing work. So it would be nice to have some continuity on the committee, so it's not a complete reset. But, yeah, but, but committee seats are completely open for reshuffle. A important committee is going to be negotiations, because we have two, two contracts. And in not the most flush of financial times, so those, those could take some time to be on the committee, but they're also super, super important. And I think having, keeping four people on the negotiations committee is good, because then we can split two and two. But yeah, that is one of the most important committees and also one of the most time-consuming committees and sometimes not the most fun. So I don't know who wants to start. Who's the current chair of the finance committee? Brett? You wanna give an overview?
Finance Committee is probably one of the less demanding committees. It's, there's a quarterly report. We review the quarterly report, summarize that committee meeting on a quarterly basis for the school board. You know, we, there's a little bit more of a dive into the budget and how things are going. Opportunity for questions and learning. If you're new to the board, it's a great opportunity for kind of getting an understanding of kind of how things, how things work and the way the, the budget functions. That's the story with the finance committee.
Any questions?
Somebody else, is that accurate? Is it, unless anyone else? That's pretty much it.
Any questions about the finance committee? Brett? Unless you wanna do it, Scott, I can do policy.
It's on you.
Okay. So the policy committee, not surprisingly, helps with our policies. Essentially, we, we make sure our policies are current. There are policies always changing based on law and kind of recommended practice. The VSBA usually does a good job of letting us know when policies need to be changed. And then oftentimes will give us a model policy to work from and we, you know, oftentimes, oftentimes change it, you know, just to make sure it reflects what works for our district in terms of values and goals. Sometimes we have to, you know, either work with Pietro, the district's lawyer, or at least be cognizant of legal changes because we are not at liberty with some policies to do whatever we want, because, because sometimes they're mandated by law. They're, they essentially have to ensure that we are complying with the law. And they range from, you know, for one, they're, they're what guides our decision-making because we are, you know, a kind of policy-focused board. But they range from everything to, you know, from our policies about alcohol and substance use in buildings to firearms, to, you know, how we conduct ourselves as a board. So they're pretty extensive. It's, I would say it's a medium to high workload committee. We've got, you know, kind of several policies right now that we're noodling on. We've got a few that I think we need to get moving. It's not a bad thing to have a bit of a legal background, because sometimes that can help you know when you're, you know, what, what, what the guardrails are and what you can do.
When they use that little S squiggly thing.
Yeah, exactly. So that's, that's a policy committee. Anything, anything to add, Scott?
I think you nailed it.
Yeah. Questions about the policy committee? Equity. Kristen, you're, you're all right?
I believe that's Mia.
Yeah, okay. You're facilities, right?
She's facilities.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But we, we have, we're working on interdependent leadership on the equity committee. So we all, we all work together as a, as a team. I'm gonna read from our draft charge to give us the, the basis of what the equity committee is about. We function to actualize commitments of the board in our diversity, equity and inclusion policy. That's policy F22, namely, take concrete action to provide a barrier-free, safe and supportive learning environment for all our students. The equity committee supports the board to identify and dismantle systemic obstacles that place limits on academic achievement and access to opportunities by MRPS learners based on race, ethnicity, gender, identity, sexual orientation, religious affiliation, mental and physical ability, financial resources and family structure. So that is what we've drafted as far as a charge goes. And to be perfectly honest, I think the equity committee, as we have gotten underway, has tried in different ways to figure out how to actualize that. And I think there are things that we've done that are very helpful. And I think we're still sort of finding our way about what it means to lead the board or support the board in meeting the goals of policy, of our DEI policy. Just a couple of examples of what we've done. We created an equity tool that mostly the policy committee uses to kind of run the decisions around policy through an equity lens. We also, for the last three years, I think, have conducted the climate survey of how, what it's like to be working in our schools. And we supported the, well, we worked on behalf of the board to find and hire the consultant who is doing the equity audit. So those are a few things that we've done to, like I said, try and find our way through that in executing on this charge. One new idea that we have that is certainly related to this and in how accessibility and communication relate to equity is that we've been talking for a while about having a committee of the board that works on communication. And as you can see from the list in the board packet, we already have many committees. So one idea of the equity committee is that we could take on some of the initial work to figure out what communication and engagement with our communities look like and then set in place some structures that all committees could follow or the board follows, because we don't really have much in place right now. So that's an idea. If you're interested in that, the equity committee might be the place for you. Oh, and one other thing, we will be getting the report from about the equity audit quite likely at the next board meeting. They're still putting the finishing touches on it as well as the presentation. And after that, I'm sure there will be other things that the equity committee will want to be focused on. It'll just be a matter of how to best use our time.
I love the idea of communications. Thank you for thinking of that.
Sure.
Yeah, I thought I was gonna bring up whether we should form a communications committee.
That report you're talking about?
We don't have it yet. We have the draft.
Yeah.
There's a nailing going on, cleaning it up and stuff.
Like, what's the idea? Like, what's the, what's the headline of it?
We.
I mean, not, not result, but what's the?
We hired the firm to do an audit of the whole district in terms of how are we doing essentially at providing an equitable education to all of our students. And so the report will highlight how we are doing at that. Yep.
So the next one is, the next one is. So the next one is, the next one is you, Kristen, facilities and energy.
Thanks, Jim. So facilities and energy committee is about three years young and kind of it started at a time when there was this sort of this confluence of. Various different facilities. You know, issues coming up or deliberations coming up in combination with, we were hearing a lot from the community. In Montpelier in particular about. Our goals, the city was, you know, established and been aiming for and a desire to see some kind of matching congruency. Supporting those goals. So, yeah, so about three years ago, I think when I initially. Or the facilities and energy committee was. Was born and since then, and really kind of our initial. Our initial effort was to really get into our buildings as a committee and to understand them. Makes us crap or the U E S cafeteria or, you know, the town hall at R V S, you know, that we had a good sense of what our facilities are are made of. So it's really kind of having a familiarity with our facilities and our building inventory such that. You know, when they're coming up as, you know, issues of. Conversation that we can kind of understand them and represent them and speak to them, you know, to the board to give you all a better sense of. Of what that looks like. And I would say in the last. Couple of years, the big push has been around net zero and this committee came up with a resolution that the board signed off on. In establishing a a net zero goal to match that of of the city of Montpelier and. We started to make the steps of creating an ad hoc committee that would help to advise the board and. And kind of prioritizing and figuring out how do we actually. Zero, a lot of that. Whole because we've been on this kind of micro focus with budget things over the last six months. But that has been a big focus of our attention. We. We work really closely with Andrew LaRota, our facilities director for the district. And he is just constantly giving us updates on kind of projects and needs and things coming up. Andrew. Produces a really. Annual recording report, we're kind of the first group that received that. Back on that.
Cutting in and out a little.
I don't know if it's your mic or something because it doesn't seem like it's your connection. You just, your volume keeps going and then back to normal.
Interesting. It's always something. Well, I don't know what to say about that.
Okay.
Because I'm on my computer, so I guess I'll keep trying. Maybe give me like a thumbs up or thumbs down if it's.
Now you're good.
Okay, and so, yeah, so we work really closely with Angela Rosa, our facilities director and and kind of reviewing that report and getting a better. Understanding of it and getting into the details. We tend to meet monthly. And that's about it. Anybody else out in the crowd? Oh, and then, of course, we also have the. Facility strategic planning process that is underway that was initiated in December and we are waiting to hear a kind of draft. Report from the, you know, from the vendor that's been conducting that for the district. So. Turns out we actually have a lot going on. So if you're, if that's appealing and you're interested, that's what we're up to.
Awesome. Thank you, Kristen. Yeah, no, and. Yeah, now, as you mentioned with that study coming out and. Yeah, facilities is interesting and the net zero stuff is going to be really interesting, too. So that is an exciting committee to be on. Superintendent evaluation, you want to tell me about it, Mia?
Sure. We conduct the annual evaluation of the superintendent, including the midpoint evaluation and. We basically hold the process and then get it in front of the board and work with Libby on it and work with to get input from. Members of Libby's team. We get input from members of the from the board. And we also try and bring in some of the top level takeaways from the climate survey to put it all together and that happens once a year. And outside of that time, we don't, the the superintendent committee doesn't really meet too much. Unless there are things we want to do to update the process that we go through. And then I will say, putting my equity committee chair hat on for one second. The equity committee was hoping to hand off the climate survey to the evaluation committee, given that it's a little bit more in their. The container of evaluation overall. And because if the equity committee is going to be taking on the work of communication, trying to get communication. And engagement a little bit more structured and going, then that will be. A lot of our focus and we don't and we don't think we would have the time for the climate survey and we do need to conduct the climate survey. Not only because it's really good information for us to have and for the community to have about what is it like to be working within our schools, but also because it is a contractual obligation that we have with our teachers. So that is quite likely going to be some of the work of the eval, the superintendent evaluation committee as well. Which we might rebrand as just the evaluation committee because Brett has for a couple of years now had the idea. That we should also be doing a board assessment, like looking at our own. How we work together and giving ourselves our own evaluation. So we may just become an evaluation committee. We'll see. You can be a part of that if you want to be on the committee.
I also want to add that with a lot of work from Mia, we restructured the tool that we use to evaluate the superintendent. It's and that was a lot of work. Hats off to Mia. And it's a much better and more effective tool. So. I just want to throw that out there.
Thanks, Brett, which means we also don't have to do that again this year.
Yeah, no, and it's one of, I mean, evaluating the superintendent, I know we might turn into a valuation committee, but. Evaluating the superintendent is probably one of the, you know, like really kind of our three main tasks are passing a budget.
Three, yeah.
Evaluating the superintendent and.
Policy.
And both policy and also lays on the community. And there was a period of in time when we did not have a superintendent evaluation committee and I I. Want to stress the importance of having a superintendent evaluation committee. It's it's. It's not the most work intensive committee, but I think it's one of the most important ones. Because hiring and keeping a good superintendent is really probably the most effective thing a board can do for the district. So the future of Roxbury Village School Committee has been, is starting to get up and. Going. I don't know, Kristen or Lynn, if you want to talk about that. And also, do we have people that we need to. Nominate and appoint to that committee. As part of this, because I know that that's that's open and we've gotten some expressions of interest, so.
Well, we met Monday night for the first time. I think it was Monday. Sometimes we it's all kind of blending together. Anyway. And we selected people from each town, teachers and parents and students to be on the committee. And we have given ourselves the charge, I think, of focusing on. Initially, the transition of kids to the schools here and or the elementary school here. And then, once that's kind of figured out and things are in place, we'll move on to. How do we want to support the community in using that building? Because that gives us the rest of the year to do that. And I think we'll be worth. Did. Do you know, Kristen, did you get all the results of the survey figured out? We're going to meet weekly, I think, for the next month because there's so much to do. And then we'll move. Every other week or something. So we were figuring out when everybody could meet. I don't know when the. Meeting is.
Yeah, I think I I've heard from most folks, but not everybody yet, but we're trying to land our standing. Committee meeting day, day and time, but in the meeting on Monday, yeah, there was. There was kind of universal feeling that this is going to require some real front loading and that we would meet weekly over the kind of in the in the first month and then from there. Try to attempt to a more biweekly meeting schedule. So, yeah, but that is to be determined hopefully in the next, I don't know, twelve hours. But it is, you know, it is great that we've been able to. We've gotten interest and we've been able to respond to that interest and we've been able to let folks know that they are officially invited to join us on this committee and the intent to get the work going in earnest quickly.
Yeah, no, excellent. And thank you, everyone, for stepping up and. And being on that committee and we can. Do we have a running list of the people who we want to appoint?
Great question. I do have a list. I would love to get feedback on what the process for appointment is. They have been informed that they're on the committee, so if there was something that we need to kind of. Board at large, that is great to know.
I mean, I think we have to formally nominate and appoint them so that way it's it's a standing body. And it's also one of those things where, like, obviously, people, you know. We we can, we can add people as they go along and. Yeah, I I think the only thing it matters for are things like quorum and any action, but otherwise, it's obviously an open meeting and, you know, if we want to add people, people drop off. We can, we can do that on a rolling basis.
Okay, so does there need to be a formal process? Should we?
Yeah. I mean, we should, we, everyone that you've told is on the committee, we should, we should nominate and appoint. And then, you know, if if we need to add folks, we can, we can do that later, but. It's pretty easy. We can just put, and we'll probably just do this all as a. As one motion once we get. Yeah, everyone's preferences set. We can, and now we can just put those names in. And you can either. Tell me or you can just send me an email and I'll I'll read it off when we when we get to the nominated.
Okay, okay, great. Yeah, and then on that is it's myself and Lynn and Rhett and. Scott and Lynn and myself have volunteered to be co chairs of that committee.
Awesome. Thank you. Excellent. Then we'll just get the rest list. So the rest of the positions have all been. Have all been already appointed. We did those. On, what was it, the sixth that we met? Tim, you, do you know, it's new to it. Do you need a refresher on on those positions or do you feel like you've? The one we've already appointed, we've appointed, you know, Scott stepped up to replace Jill for the.
Yeah.
Okay, you've got that. Okay, cool. So I don't know how best to do this, Scott.
I I don't either. I just want to, I need to come off of something. I've already had four board meetings this week and so I'd like to come off policy maybe. Sorry, Jim. And.
That's what I want to come up with, too.
So we got a clean slate.
Which doesn't do well. I think that committee in particular needs continuity, or maybe it doesn't. I don't know. But if we both leave and then Emma's already gone.
I think somebody should be on it who has been on it for a bit.
Yeah, I I may. I I may stay.
Could I offer a suggestion? The just for a bit that Lynn said gave me an idea that you could just do it for like. Two or three months to to do a smooth handoff and then we could formally allow you to step down.
Yeah.
From the committee instead of having it be like you're looking at the next year.
Oh, yeah, no.
A member of all all the committees that you're currently.
And we do, we just right around, we we do shift committees in midstream if if people are feeling. Overloaded or or whatever.
Done it.
Yeah, so. You are not locked in stone.
Has has anyone been on policy besides the two of us on this current board?
I have.
Yeah, Brett has.
I'm interested in the policy committee.
You'd be interested in the back?
Yeah. I mean, I can't be on every committee.
No, you can't.
You can try, Brett. I don't recommend it, though.
Well, I think Tim is interested in, you're interested in finance, right?
Yeah.
Would you want us, would you want to step off of finance?
Sure. What what is the negotiation season? Is it August, September?
The teachers are going to want to start early. They already talked to me about that, so I would imagine that the teachers get started right, really in September, maybe October. The IAs typically take a little bit longer to, I wouldn't expect that, like I usually have to push them to get started, so. I'd expect them around November, November-ish, hopefully.
And we oftentimes have Pietro help us with the teacher negotiations.
Yeah, teachers is actually less stressful than or less. Work, I'd say, than the IAs. Pietro really leads the teachers. It's a different kind of work, I guess, than the IAs. The IAs. Aren't overly burdensome. They're, it's just, it's a different kind of work.
You just don't have.
More talking and conversation with the IAs than than Pietro leading the, leading the way.
Yeah, you you don't have the help of a highly skilled, highly paid professional.
Right.
Which can, which can be useful.
Do we have a Word doc version of the committee assignments or just the PDF?
I just have, I just have a PDF which I printed out and I'm.
Chicken scratching.
Chicken scratching it.
And I bet you Anna's on top of it.
Yeah. Yeah, Anna does a, does a great job of translating our chicken scratch into usable documents.
Well, if it helps, I'm on three committees and I like the ones I'm on and I'd like to stay there.
Okay.
Boom.
Done. Unless you.
And she's like, I'm not moving.
Somewhere else.
Put me on another committee. That's what I just heard.
So Scott would like to drop off of policy. Is there any other committees that you're?
That that's my preference.
Okay.
And I think if I did that, I would be at a. At a Google Librium.
Yeah, when I, after the first year on the Career Center, especially because I was the chair, but even so, there's subcommittees on that board as well for finance and facilities. So I was sort of given the pass of, not that being on negotiations is a pass, but having only one other committee. So I'm happy to take your spot on policy if that helps.
Oh, there you go. Yeah, that's awesome.
Okay, so I think. Other than finance, Tim, where, what what's grabbing your eyes?
I, you know, I figure I'm the new guy, so I'm also happy to take the last things hanging. As a new guy, but I mean, the things that I. And policy is interesting, the sort of evaluation committee sounds interesting as you were describing it. So. Those are things. I'd be happy to do, I guess, what's the norm here? Two or three or what? Happy to do three because it seems like a couple of those are. I could give you my spot on the evaluation committee. And then I would stay with. Policy. R V S and. What's the, and then.
Negotiations.
Yeah, that's a, that's a heavy, that's a full load for you, Rhett.
Yeah, so 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 you could take my spot on the evaluation committee. Just to lessen things for me a tiny bit. That works for anyone.
Yeah, finance is just quarterly meetings.
Yeah.
If he's on that and the others, it's.
Do you want to, do you want to put you on policy too? And I can stay there for continuity and if it. If I can swing it time wise, I'll stay and otherwise, if you're getting up to speed, I, that's maybe something I could step off.
Second.
I said, put you on policy. I can stand policy for continuity. You know, Brett's going to bring a little continuity too. And then we either keep it a four person committee or if I'm feeling overloaded, I can step off and. You're a lawyer too, so you can, you can play that, you can play that role. You're a lawyer too, so you can, you can play that, you can play that role if need be.
I'll, I'll be the person in charge of this.
Yeah, there you go. Know exactly when to use it.
And are all the folks who currently are in the negotiation, is committee happy with being on the negotiators committee? And is there anyone who's just dying to be on the negotiations committee?
That's when I actually would prefer not to be on just because of work that I do.
So that's, so we can keep that as is. Is everyone who's on the finance committee with the, except the always switch, take out, Tim out for Rhett. Just is anyone wanting to move on to the finance committee or wanting to move off of the finance committee?
I'm happy where I am. I love finance.
You love finance committee?
I'm on the finance committee for the Career Center too, so it's like efficiencies of scale.
So let's see, we have policy committee all set unless there's someone else who's interested in the policy committee.
And just to recap, that's Jim, Rhett, Jill and Tim on policy right now.
Jim is emeritus.
The equity committee, is there anyone who wants to step on or off of the equity committee? Right now it's Kristen, Mia and Lynn. And we can, you know, we can have four people, we have five people on the committee.
Yeah, yeah, we have to swap out. Yeah.
We, right, I thought, but when I started, there was a discussion around the optimum is three, so that if two people are there.
You still have a quorum.
There's still a quorum.
Yeah.
Right. And so with four, if two people are there, it's not a quorum because it's not more than 50%.
Right.
Exactly. Although I think that's just for, I think you can still meet and do business.
Just you can't take action.
You can't take formal action.
Yeah.
So it's not, and there's not a lot of formal action in the committee. Most takes the state of the board. So it's not, it's not a trend. And I also think we try to, like, three to four is the sweet spot. Because if we try to, I think we're all cognizant that there's only so many committees we can be on and only so many bodies. Anyone who wants to move on or off the equity committee?
It doesn't feel good to me that there are three women on the equity committee. And I also was told that I need to learn how to say no. And so I'm like. Can't tell you who told me I need to say no, but. You might be able to guess.
Good advice, no matter who gave it to you.
It's good advice.
Someone near, near you.
So I'm contemplating it.
Well, you can always join later.
I was just gonna say, you, you could assess how this new balance is working for you, Scott. And if you're feeling like you've got a little more to give. Just, well, we can appoint you to it.
And the meetings are open to the public, so you could visit, check it out.
Yeah.
So right now we're set with that. Scott may, if time allows. Want to move out of the committee at some point this year. Facilities and energy, right now it's Kristen, Lynn and Jake. Anyone who is either interested in stepping on that committee or stepping off of the committee?
I think I would be interested in joining the committee.
Awesome.
When it meets, so.
We have. At lunch times on weekdays. But we could move it to a time that's better for you, probably.
Yeah, I feel like we've largely been re, meeting on either kind of early Friday mornings or, or kind of lunch hour on Fridays.
I love early Friday mornings.
Yeah, I didn't hear, who was that wanting to hop on? Oh, cool. Yeah. Yeah, we could try to figure out Miriam, kind of a time that would work for you. Yeah. Cool.
One quick question.
Is the practice typically remote for committee meetings or are they typically in person?
The finance committee is often in person because it's like 5:30. Immediately preceding a board meeting. But.
And they're just, they're, they're often, doesn't Christina usually kind of report out? Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's the only one that I think I've.
And negotiations is generally in person.
There often be four board meetings too.
Yeah, or just at random times that oftentimes never end.
You're kidding, Jayden.
Getting.
I'd add nine hour.
Picking on you.
Nine hour negotiations meeting. Yeah.
Yeah.
So it seems like we're, do we, the current lineup of the facilities and energy committee is good with the addition of Miriam? The Net Zero ad hoc committee is on there. Is that something we need to appoint folks to, Kristen?
Um, I believe we do. Yeah, I think I maybe need to have a conversation with you, Jim, Libby, about just like 101. Appointing committee member, or sorry, community members to, to.
I've already pointed members.
Have numbers. Not a formal process. However, that process has often been very much put on pause. I just like having committee parties, so. Don't acknowledge formalities. So, yeah, but anyhow, but that group has also not really formally assembled because at the time that we were finally getting momentum. Budget need years hit. So, yes, but we have interested parties and we really need like a regrouping now that. We're starting to move forward.
Yeah, so it's, it sounds like it may be in flux a little. Do you want to? Kind of get the group that.
I think reconvening the facilities and energy committee would be kind of first step. And then as a group, you know, kind of figuring it out from there. You know, there's just been a lot of different. Things that have occurred since this, this group started. So I think we need to start with a committee meeting and then, you know, and then go from there.
I also think that's a, that's a good conversation and question to have with. The, the people who are doing our facilities audit. There's, there's mention of Net Zero in the, in the audit that you'll see. So they will be excellent resources for the facilities and energy committee.
Great. Yeah. And I think that's kind of what we were trying to figure out is just like the timing of, of that piece and when to get this ad hoc committee, if there was kind of things that we would be waiting on for them. So there was just a lot of, you know, a lot of different threads that felt like we needed to pull together. So.
Yeah, wait for the audit on that because they, they do talk about that.
Okay, and do we, okay, yeah, and I'll, I'll get.
Coming in May.
Okay, May. Thanks.
Okay, do we have the board members appointed to that?
Not yet.
Uh, yeah.
Sounds like Kristen.
Well, no, like with the future, with the Roxbury transition, future Roxbury Village School Committee, like we. Decided on the four board members and then like got the community. And so I didn't know if we had. And I should know the answer because I was on the board one.
Yeah, I'll claim like a little bit of amnesia around, it's just like some revisiting is, is necessary. On the composition of that. So I'll check in and, and circle back with folks.
Can the facilities and energy committee just kind of fold that in tempor, fold the Net Zero in temporarily?
Yeah, I mean, that's where it lives. You know, you mean the, the ad hoc committee, Lynn?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the ad hoc committee kind of lives within the, the facilities and energy committee. That was a kind of first initiative of the resolution that the board passed was to create this ad hoc committee to. Kind of support the implementation of the resolution and get feedback from a group of, you know, just informed and experienced stakeholders in that realm. So that's, that's where it currently lives.
So it's really an ad hoc subcommittee of the facilities and energy.
Yes, that feels accurate.
Got my nomenclature right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think in terms of appointing, that probably could be a consent agenda item. You could just, once you get the list, you could just send it to Anna and she could put it in the packet and.
For the Net Zero?
Yeah.
For both, right?
Yeah, for both.
The, the important thing is that it's in the public record.
Exactly. The important thing is that it happens. Otherwise, it's, it's not a committee. It's just a group of people.
It's just a party.
Just a party.
I, I think I'm, I don't know. I think I'd also just like to say, just taking this all in. I, I don't know how, I, I feel that the RVS transition committee work is going to be a, you know, a big, a big lift and. The, the facilities committee alongside with this ad hoc committee, I feel like that sort of puts me on three committees and I may want to consider stepping down from the equity committee as much as I really don't want to, but I think just realistically, I don't think I can hold all four of those pieces. So if there was somebody who is really hankering for a space on the equity committee, oh, double thumbs down from Mia. Okay.
Why, I support that. I support you setting boundaries and saying no when you need to, Kristen.
I don't know if you can see, Jim is looking at me right now.
But I also miss you.
Yes, thank you. And it seems like maybe Scott, this could be a segue for you.
Oh, boy.
Oh, but you also, anyways.
He's working on saying no as well.
The camera's on me right now, which is good.
Well, why don't, you've got a lot of, why don't we? Why don't we move you from the equity committee and just leave it at two, four now with the idea that, that Scott is, is going to, to go wrestle with.
Just put me on the equity committee. It's possible in June I could join another committee. But not right now.
Can we ask you to join other committees so you can say no to that? So even like. They say you said no.
Let's see, what else is there? Oh, finance?
He's on policy, finance and.
No, you just took him off policy. He's not, you're not. Not you didn't just take him off.
He's on finance, RVS.
Oh, and that, and that, oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Oh, and, and he's the rep to the center.
Right. And is on the finance. Okay. No, we don't need to, we don't need to repeat your CV to you. Sorry.
You, you get low marks on saying no.
This could be recorded, is it?
Boy, okay.
It's maybe being watched. All right. So do you have names you want to list for the? RVS Transition Committee?
I'm sorry, one more time?
Do you have names that you want to list for the RVS Transition Committee? So we can just put those in and approve them as part of the slate?
Yep, I would just need to scroll to another screen and give me a moment.
Okay. And so, and just while you do that, everyone is okay with the idea of the Equity Committee kind of doing an exploration of communications and coming up with some next steps on that? Maybe even just. An equity and communications committee at some point?
Maybe. Yeah, I mean. The initial thinking is that we'd have ideas to bring before the board and then the board would figure out what to.
What to do.
Do with them and how to use them. Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
I'm good with that. That's been my deal for a long time, so.
Awesome.
Okay, I'm ready. So you want me to read these off and then I could like copy paste these names into an email if that's easiest?
Yeah, perfect. And I, yeah, send them to Anna and me and Libby. Yeah.
Okay, so our, our V S Roxbury Village School Transition Committee. Folks that we would like to nominate are Amber Wadley, Vivah Khan, Diego Soria, Hannah Bryant, Hannah Zajak. Jackson Renfrew Gerard, if I have that right, Katie Swick, Katie Stevens Favorite, Peyton Donahue, Rachel Popoli and Victor Wurango.
I hear some stupid names in there. That's awesome.
Yeah, it's a good list.
We have three students, two from Roxbury and one from Montpelier.
That's fantastic.
Yeah, I think we have a nice mix of skills and people and perspectives and stuff. I think that'd be good.
So can I have a motion to nominate the fall? Well, before I do that, any, any last minute changes? Switcheroo's regrets?
Changes of heart. Try not to all look at Scott.
So I just come from finance, policy and evaluation.
Yes, okay. So I scratched down the names and I'm not, I'm going to repeat it. So the. So I'm, I'm going to go from bottom to top. So on the future of Roxbury Village School, the Transition Committee, we have Scott, Rhett. Kristen and Lynn from the board, plus all of the people that Kristen just named that she's going to put in email to send to Anna and I. For superintendent evaluation, me, Tim, Mia. And that's your ad hoc committee will be formed or at least. Put in an email and send to us at a later date. Facilities and energy will be Kristen, Lynn, Jake, Miriam. Equity, Scott, Mia, Lynn. Policy, Jim, Rhett, Jill, Tim. Finance, Tim, Scott, Jake. Negotiations, Jill, Rhett, Jim, Lynn. Does that all sound right? Do I have a nomination? Do I have a motion to appoint that slate to? What I just said, they're on.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's a favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thanks. And Anna, how much of that did you get and how much did need sent to you?
I got it all updated on the Google Doc already. We're good.
Oh, wow.
Dang.
That is awesome.
I, I just wanted to highlight one thing that I think Lynn, you, you mentioned, but I just want to make sure not only board members, but also members of the public who are watching. These committees, meetings are open meetings, just like board meetings are. And these are places where members of the community can. Serve as a member of a committee without have, without having to be a board member. So if anyone who's listening is interested and says, hey, I'd really like to be part of that equity committee. But is thinking maybe they're not allowed to because they're not a board member. That's not true. We can, we can have citizen members of our committees.
I think for some, but not all.
Right, not like in negotiations that we probably can't.
We cannot, no.
And for, so if anyone's interested in any of them, please email schoolboard@mpsvt.org to, to know whether or not it's one that you could serve on or if you want to get the like ongoing meeting schedule so that you can participate in it if you want.
That's a quick question. Do we, like, right, new guy question again, but do we have chairs of each? Like, will someone call a meeting that we will, okay, all right.
And when the committees meet, they can, they can nominate their own chair?
I actually want to make sure that. He's gonna do something.
Yes. And, and we can, we can set those, those processes in motion. Does anybody have revote board messaging, which I have to be 100% sure, honest, that I'm not totally sure what that is?
I can, I can help you out there. This is for the board to discuss, like, how do we, what, is there anything we want to do leading up to April 30th? To encourage getting out the vote and help inform voters about the new version of the budget.
Okay, that revoke.
That revoke.
Yes.
Not revoke.
We are not.
I know, like, did we vote on our board messaging? Like, okay.
Can I start off hot out of the gate on this one?
You start out however you want.
I was hoping, so your flurry of front porch form. The post right before the original vote was great.
Oh, thank you.
And I was. And I was really hoping that I think probably the Front Porch Forum activity is going to pick up again, you know, with all kinds of craziness. Is there some way that we can nip misconceptions in the bud right as they happen? Like, oh, they want to do a track and it's blah, 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 blah. You know, it's like, well, here's what we're doing on the track. You know, it's $400,000 out of originally 1.9s for safety. Well, you know, is that possible?
I think it definitely is. I mean, here is kind of my thought on the budget. I think we did hard work and had made hard choices and I think we've got a budget that's going to pass. My concern is that people are just going to forget to vote.
Concern is what?
People are going to forget to vote.
Forget to vote.
And, and I think like we can definitely do that messaging. I think getting frequent reminders out to the public that, you know, walk, walk to City Hall, vote. It's on the, it's, you know, it's a weird, it's a weird day. People have already had Town Meeting Day. They're not thinking about voting. It's, it's kind of not on the calendar. It's, you know, for state workers, it's not a holiday. It's kind of a random Tuesday. It's a little spring.
The first Tuesday coming back after spring break where maybe, maybe folks have been traveling?
John Odom did some stuff on Front Porch Forum about the vote and I don't know if he would be willing to do something else, but we could also remind people that they can get absentee ballots.
You can walk down now.
And drop them.
You can vote tomorrow. Yeah. They are ready to accept your vote.
Yeah.
So I think we should, you know, that might help a lot with getting more votes in and reminding people. And I think we, are you still doing stuff in the bridge?
I'm planning to do another Times Artist Argus article and I think you're planning to do something in the bridge, right?
I could, I could, yeah. I think those are a component. I wouldn't say they're the only thing, yeah, only thing we should do. Yeah.
I think like having just us ping folks and also using, kind of having it be a constant thing in the like principals communications to caregivers that walk, you know, you, please vote. We can't tell people how to vote. We're going to please vote. And you can either vote on April 30th, you can request an absentee ballot to be sent to your house, or you can just.
Go get one.
Go get one and take, you know, it's,
Go vote.
It's, it's a five second vote. I mean, it's, it's one question.
So I, I've been seeing, I think there's like flyers posted on every school front door and the, the weekly messages coming out from principals, there's that similar or the same flyer. I think in my, before I retired from UGM Extension, one of the, one of the tactics we were really focusing on was, was not, not reinventing the wheel, right? You take the same content and you repurpose it for, you know, every possible medium. And so if, if you're already planning a Times Artist, Times Argus article, you know, what, can we just take that and with some reformatting, make it a Front Porch Forum post? Make it a Bridge article, make it a whatever. And rather than, you know, seven of us all creating something from scratch.
Yeah, I think we should definitely do that. And, and, you know, the, a link to the Times Argus article can be a Front Porch Forum post.
Yep.
Yeah. I, I just think like reminding people to to get out and vote.
Sooner rather than.
Sooner rather than later.
No need to wait.
Yeah, no need to wait. Yeah. And especially, especially with, you know, spring break. Because, you know, people are going to be focused on going on spring break and then they're going to come back and then they're going to, you know.
Do we have to have a budget information meeting prior to the vote, just like on Town Meeting Day?
I thought that was in the timeline.
Do, yeah.
There is an informational meeting. It's not a, it's not a board meeting. It's, it's not a board meeting, but there is an informational meeting that we have to have and will have.
It has to be a certain number of days prior to the vote.
Yeah, well, Christine and I are already planning and doing it the day before the vote.
They're pretty awesome flyers. I'm not to sign.
Me and Alara up for more work, but I was thinking that if we could try and send those flyers home with high school students, that could be a way to get them to the parents. So we could potentially park ourselves at the doors before break and try and get them to people.
Can we ask teachers to put them in folders for like, I know my kids bring stuff home from elementary school and in theory they're supposed to bring home from middle school.
Immediately and then do the week packet or something, isn't there?
It, yeah, it varies depending upon the teacher and the age, I suspect, but there is a mechanism for getting stuff home and I think it varies.
That's a question for Libby and Brad. I saw your hand. I'll give you a second.
Yeah, we, we can totally send something home. And Scott, you're right in that it varies in ages. So what actually gets home?
But ours are usually crumpled up underneath like last week's lunch.
Right, exactly. At the bottom of the backpack that you clean out maybe once a week.
I found orange juice and, yeah, exactly.
Rhett?
I was just, I think it's worth mentioning that it's likely folks in Roxbury will be quite motivated to vote. So for what it's worth, if Montpelier supports this budget, people should show up.
Rhett, do you know if the, if Tammy, the town clerk, has, has ballots already? We just know that John Odom has ballots already and I don't know if they use the same printer or anything. Kristen or Rhett, do you know?
I don't know.
So we don't know if folks in Roxbury can, we should just make sure we're clear. Like, we don't want Roxbury folks to go to the Town Hall tomorrow and be like, I'm ready to vote and have Tammy go, sorry, you're not, I'm not ready for you. So we don't.
We haven't heard from Tammy. I'm not sure.
Okay.
But I don't know if they usually, if she usually tells us when the ballots are in. I don't, I don't think that's usually a conversation we have. But it's not usually one with John either. I think John, because it's his re-vote.
Right, right.
I do think that John and Tammy have been in touch quite a bit, so he may be better than we are.
Yeah, that's what John said when he came here. He said that they were in vacation and Tammy was just like, do whatever. Roxbury was sounded like a lot easier than, than Montpelier and could do whatever worked.
It's just a matter of whether or not, he literally only has the ballots now because the printer was faster than he expected them to be. So we don't know if she's using the same printer or whatever. So we don't want to be putting out false get out the vote information. That would be bad.
Kristen?
Did, I recall there being a conversation that if you had requested an absentee ballot in the first vote, that you would automatically be sent an absentee ballot in this vote. Is that true?
No, John, they changed that rule.
Yeah, he retracted that.
Okay. So that is.
You request one again. If you would prefer to do an absentee ballot, you do need to request one again from your town clerk.
An absentee ballot at home, but you can vote early and basically get an absentee ballot like at the desk.
And John had included that in his Front Porch Forum post and there was, I can't, I think he checked with the Department of State or Agent, whoever runs the elections, but, and.
Secretary.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm just going to shut up.
Yeah, so, so I get the Times Argus article. I totally agree with you, Scott. Let's recycle materials. We don't need to write the same thing seven times. But I think it's really important to remind people in both communities about the date and how to vote, where to vote and to vote, because it's a weird election.
And am I correct in saying we could send an email to our friends and neighbors as an individual person that says, hey, the vote's coming up, you can vote tomorrow. We could do that. We don't have to, it doesn't just have to be Front Porch Forum and the Bridge and whatever.
Yeah, let me do it on Facebook and.
Yeah. So that would be another tactic we could use as individuals to just say, want to make sure you know, you could vote today at Town, at Town Hall.
Yeah.
If you're a Montpelier resident.
Are we allowed to tell, ask our friends and neighbors to support the budget?
So I, I'm glad you asked that question.
As an individual, yes. I think, I think if someone like Jake Feldman, should I vote for this budget? I think you say, yeah, it's Jake Feldman. Yes, you should, you should. I don't think you say like the board, on behalf of the board, I'm going to vote. On behalf of Jake, you certainly can.
We unanimously voted to support the budget.
There is.
In a public meeting.
To forward it to voters, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as, as, for some odd reason, like as a board body, you can, you can tell people, you can ask people to vote. You can tell them why it's beneficial for the school. But you can't say, go vote yes.
I thought the question was as an individual, even an individual board member, I can say, I supported this budget.
I, I think if, I think if you have your board hat on, you can say you supported your budget and why. You just can't say, vote yes on the budget. You say, please vote on the budget and here's why I supported it. I know, it's kind of stupid, but I don't get it. Because obviously we wouldn't forward a budget to the voters that we didn't want them to vote yes on, but.
Well, there are cases and I've, I've never experienced this as a board member myself, where boards are not unanimous, for example. But that's not the case right now.
Yeah. But I don't think that's the reason. I think it's, I think it's something else. That's, I think there's some other
Technical thing.
Some weird quirk behind that, that rule.
I would be interested in knowing what the weird quirk is, but we definitely don't have to go there tonight since it doesn't, since it seems like nobody in this room knows what the weird quirk is. I don't think we have to talk about the weird quirk.
I'm sure, I'm sure Ph. R. does. And I'm sure.
Oh, send him an email. So those are ideas that we have for the sort of get out the vote. I think we could come back to Jake's hot take about engaging on Front Porch Forum about, around making clarifications, right?
Yeah, well, if, if these articles were out there, then as the misconceptions pop up, we could say, you know, actually, here's this truth and for more information, just check out this article or our budget page.
The Budget FAQ page is the place I was.
The Budget FAQ or Times Argus article?
Yeah. Yeah. One question I have about that is whether or not that's something we would sort of empower any board member to do if they saw it on Front Porch Forum or if it's something we want to task a singular individual or, or a couple of individuals to do.
Maybe that the Equity and Communications Committee could talk about that in the near term. It seems like it might get messy if a lot of board members were trying to take responsibility. I personally, I don't think I would be good at it, but you know, I'd be comfortable with you doing it.
Why don't we, why don't we do it this way? Why not, if you, if you see something on Front Porch Forum that you think should be responded to, send an email to Libby and me and then I can share it with Mia. If you include Mia on the first one, then I think we get three. And we can like, and with even like a proposed response. And then we can vet it. And that way it won't get, we won't be speaking with a bunch of different voices. There'd be a coordinated point, but we'll all kind of be watching. You know, you propose text and then, you know, we can kind of like respond that way. And I, I'm not sure we, I'm not sure we want to respond to everything on Front Porch Forum, but I think if there, if, if there are misconceptions that seem to be building, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's helpful to to correct them.
Yeah, I think engaging in a dialogue through Front Porch Forum doesn't help.
But, you know, if there is, you know, some wild rumor out there that everyone thinks we're, you know, spending $2 million on a, on a swimming pool, we probably want to correct that.
Now there will be.
We might end up spending $2 million on the swimming pool, but it would be because of a flood.
Oh, dear.
Or you could just acquire a swimming pool.
Okay, I think what you just proposed sounds good to me. The thing I was trying to wait, like the, the, what I was weighing in my mind was it sometimes has a lot of work to keep up with what's with the, the things that get posted on Front Porch Forum. So it would be a lot, I think, to ask of one person to, to be tracking it all. But if we have anybody, collective eyes and then a central, like a funnel that the communication goes through, I think that works certainly for the next month.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking like themes that are emerging, not necessarily individual.
Yeah.
Sure. Yep.
I would add, for James, notice caution and strength and not, you know, not over, overdoing that and sort of, because I think you can't get a little back and forth to you.
It could get ticky tacky sometimes, so.
Stick to the facts.
Yeah.
I do think it's important to note the very real heartache of having to close Roxbury Village School when we do talk about these things that have made really, really challenging and, you know, difficult decisions to arrive at this budget. It's not a responsibility we take lightly. And just kind of remind folks who might start to sort of pick away. It's like, this is, this is after
A lot of work.
A lot of really hard work and some pain and just sort of honor that.
Kristen, Chris, all right.
No, just that I don't want it to sort of be like, okay, that's, that happened. And, and I need Montpelier voters to understand how ma, how massive that was.
Kristen?
Thanks for saying that, Jill. I think, I feel compelled to share that this is a really difficult vote out in Roxbury. The premise of this vote is moving our youngest students to UES, which was not the will of our community. And that's really being felt right now. I do expect there to be a number of voters. It's impossible to tell how many in Roxbury that will vote no on this budget due to that factor. I know that the budget originally did pass, you know, the first budget did pass in Roxbury and, you know, I think in part, it's an assumption, but that budget passed because the budget did include continued operation of RVS. And so, you know, Rhett and I are definitely in a, in a different place, in a, in a, in a trickier place in terms of motivating the vote out here because this budget is, is a hard one for a lot of folks to swallow. So I think, you know, Rhett and I have, I know we put it in the Roxbury Newsie that, you know, this would be, these are just the logistics of the vote and how to vote and what have you, but the nature of this vote is a really, really hard one out in Roxbury. And I know that we have things to add to that conversation in terms of the whys of, you know, why, you know, at least I voted for this with the addition of the transportation funding, the consideration of after school and, and things like that. But this is, this is definitely a tough vote out in, out in Roxbury.
Yeah, no, definitely. And I think, I think we should encourage people to vote regardless of how we feel they're going to vote.
Absolutely. So thank you already for doing the, the work of making sure people know how to do it and when to do it. Yeah.
Anything else on that? And I'll, I'll get to that TA article for the next couple of days. Well, thanks for, and, and definitely, I mean, to Jake's point, you can, you can talk to friends and neighbors as an individual, kind of as, as you want and, yeah. Definitely encouraging people to get out as, to vote is, is important because it is, it's a, yeah. It's a weird election. There's nothing else on the ballot. It's, the timing's a little strange, so turnout is probably going to be not as high as we see in other elections. So our final order of business, and we may have, have an under four hour meeting here, is policy monitoring. We have three policy monitoring reports, FM 100, which is Budget Execution, D7, Special Education, and D22, Selection of Library Materials. Do I have a motion to approve those three monitoring reports?
So moved. He can do it. Jake can do it. Anna. He can do it. Jake can do it. Anna.
Jake was nodding his head, which I don't think counts.
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, any discussion about the monitoring reports?
As a general matter, is it the case that when we're getting policy reports, they come with the approval of the Policy Committee?
Yeah. The policy monitoring is solely, so these are, these are policies that, you know, that were approved by the Policy Committee and then approved by the Board and enacted. And she just periodically basically reports compliance of those.
So what we're proving here is nothing about the policy. It's about those like addendums.
Yeah, exactly.
That say this is how we're.
Yeah.
It's almost like we're accepting this monitoring report.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just, it's just, yeah, we want to make sure that we're in compliance with all the policies and, and we just put, put them on a rolling basis.
Another nuance that I didn't quite appreciate.
No, it's, it's a, it's a good question because it, it might not be obvious.
Thanks for asking.
Yeah, thanks for asking. And like, feel free to ask those whenever, because um, I know when I was new, I oftentimes sat there and be like, what am I doing? All's a favor? Any opposed? And then motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn?
Second?
Second that?
All's a favor?
Aye.